I didn't, but for obvious reasons.
You never know.
Now I'm thinking.
We?
No.
I'm not looking at it.
No.
Yeah. Okay, that's three o'clock.
I'm not waiting.
Town, we're ready to go.
I know, I feel the same way.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is Thursday, August 20th, 2015. Time for the meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development District Board of Supervisors. We have a quorum. Please stand and join us in the pledge to our flag and country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If you have a noisemaker like this, please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. If you wish to speak to the board, please fill out a form near the door where that gentleman is and give it to our manager. Mr. Manager will hold up his hand so you'll know who gets, who's supposed to get them. And, Mr. Manager, do we have public participants regarding agenda items?
And, just for clarification, during the public hearing on the budget, there will also be an opportunity to speak on the budget.
That is so.
Okay. We have Douglas Stewart, and he's got sidewalk and water assessment.
Yeah, that's me. Please come to the podium, sir.
There we go.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what are they doing about the sidewalks? Are they just gonna roll forever? Are they gonna pave? And when is it gonna be done? The sidewalk that goes from past Bristol Park to the school.
I think the gentleman needs to state his name and his address.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Douglas Stewart.
Pardon?
Douglas Stewart.
S.T.E.W.I.R.T.
A.R.T., yeah.
And your address, sir.
One, three, two, zero, zero, Bristol Parkway.
Thank you. Mr. Operations Manager or Mr. Engineer, would you help us with that, please?
Sorry, Scott Connell for the district. The asphalt pathway along Griffin Drive is what you're referring to. There was a holdup due to weather and, to be frankly, the, frank with you, the operator was in the hospital. So, they're coming back, he's back now, and hopefully, within the next two to three weeks, it'll be completed. They're gonna be paving, finish the grading, doing some curb work, and then do the paving for the pathway. And they're also working on the stretch from the power lines on Griffin Drive west to Gateway Boulevard.
Okay. Does that satisfactorily answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it's just, my wife works the night shift, she sleeps during the day, and she's having problems.
Okay.
ASAP would be great, you know.
Board members have comments or questions, Mr. Stewart? Thank you very much for...
Yeah, and just one other question about the assessment.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
The assessment for the upcoming fiscal year?
The water assessment.
Oh, the water assessment?
Yeah, yeah, I forgot to bring my, oh, wait, I did have a copy.
Yeah, that's the budget.
We're discussing all of that at the budget hearing later this afternoon. Would you just please hold that?
Just found out I got cataracts on it.
Thank you.
Doesn't know why.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Manager?
Okay, Gary Maxim, and Maxer, Maxim, and on one, three, three, oh, eight Bristol Way, Parkway, and assessments in Griffin Drive. I'm sorry. Not a hard name. Gary Mayor, one, thirteen, three, oh, eight Bristol Parkway. Anything else? No, good. The question I had was, it's relating to what Mr. Deacon, or Mr. Stewart said. One of the questions, I guess, will be answered on the budget, when it will stop and when it's gonna go in, so we're gonna get to that down the road. Griffin Parkway, or Griffin Drive, is that in plans to be paved? In works eventually, yes? All right, 'cause it's starting to look like a New York road. Got more potholes than Swiss cheese.
There are plans to pave it. Mr. Manager, can you help us with that one?
Uh-oh, I'll relate the question back to you. I'm gonna ask Yvonne, I didn't hear the question, but Mr. Pierce is on the line. We can hook him up here, I apologize.
What do we get the answer?
Go ahead.
Why don't we get the answer?
Yeah. Can you help us with the answer to that, please, Yvonne?
Yvonne Bellis, Gateway Services District. What we have now, we have a contract with PMI. PMI is a contractor, it's going to restore all the roads that belong to the district. There are three, three stages, or three locations. They already did one. The next, the next time around, they are going to do the portion of Griffin Drive from Gateway Boulevard to the power line, and that's going to begin on August 7. Right now, they are, they remove all the asphalt on the pathway, and they are going to be paving that also. So, eventually, when everything is done, not only the portion that belong to the district, but the portion that are in the WCI's hands are going to get repaved. So, WCI already have a contractor on board, is a, and they should begin within a few weeks also to do the work. So, within the next few months, all the streets, major streets within Gateway, they are going to be repaved, reconstructed essentially, and repaved.
Thank you. Yvonne, does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, but I have a little bit more, and a contingency of spending money, our community's money on that, and understanding what, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Gary, are you aware, we don't, the district doesn't own all of Griffin Drive?
No, no, I understood that. No, I understood everything he said.
Part of it's owned by WCI, which is totally their responsibility.
Correct.
Part of it is owned by the district, which is the district.
Wouldn't there be a contingency in place not to do this so early, even in the front half that we do own? Because of the amount of truck traffic coming out of Hampton, that's basically what ruined the road. I mean, we've got trenches going in either direction from these overweighted trucks, and it's an eight-hour contingent a day, running, and it has slowed up a little bit, but the weight of these trucks have far exceeded the pavement in that road. And if you continue to run new pavement and have these trucks continue to run on them as they do, on whatever variable speeds that their contingents are, you're gonna wreck the heck out of a new road. And you're gonna be back to step one with ruts and holes, and it was just getting good money and putting it into bad situation.
Have you ever heard of the chicken and the egg analogy?
Yeah, but I, 'cause I don't think that fits in this situation.
Well, it certainly is. We are trying to get the roads that the CDD owns in first-class shape so we can turn them over to Lee County. WCI owns another part of those roads, and they're trying to get them in the first-class shape so the whole, all of the roads, major roads can be turned over to Lee County. These decisions were made almost two years ago, and we are moving as fast as governments generally move to get this all done. I understand your concern about Hampton Park, but Hampton Park's gonna be under construction for years.
So, we have no contingency, like, even if we do pave these roads, and I don't think chicken and eggs really fit it because who, what knows comes first? So, but in any case, we do know what's happening up there, and we do know that the road is going to be repaved, and yes, we are paying for that, for whatever portion we own. So, we do have an understanding of what is coming first. So, to say that indeed, if these roads are paved and the county comes in and says, well, this road is in tatters, and you told us it was gonna be repaired, and we understand that Hampton, shouldn't somebody tell Hampton to route those trucks out to eighty-two rather than pushing them down Griffin? Eighty-two's entrance where they're coming out of is less than a hundred yards, but they're coming down that road continuously. So, to go out to Griffin, to go out to eighty-two, I understand they're probably saving gas. But this is a community.
That's a good suggestion, and we'll have our managers in WCI discuss that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, please. Gary?
Yep.
We have a member, apparently has a question.
Thank you, thank you for your ideas.
Well, you know, I just, you know, I love the community, but I think that, you know, Hampton's trucks are, and I understand, we gotta, you know, deal with expansion through this community.
I think that there's two things I would say. I would get some grain of comfort out of the fact that if the roads are not in a satisfactory condition, then Lee County won't accept, okay, whenever that is, it's likely to be, Mr. Wingard will probably tell us, but probably first part of next year. But the other thing is, I think you've made a good point about redirecting traffic. I'm not sure we can actually do that out of Hampton Park, but I certainly support the chairman's point that we can, we can certainly ask the questions.
Yeah.
But it's a good idea. But we had all this before in another community, in redirecting traffic out of Pelican Preserve.
Yeah.
And it's not easy for us to tell them which way to go. I don't think we have that power, but it's certainly worth suggesting.
Yeah, and what I've experienced, and just to add a little bit to it, and thank you for your consideration and time to all the board members, but to say that indeed, I've experienced it, and I just recently saw somebody else experience the same thing, these trucks are running, understandably, with fill of some kind, with large rocks, and they're not cleaning the back of their gate area, and they're filling over. I, if I didn't slam my brakes on them, thank God there was nobody behind me, I would've had rocks about the size of a half a dollar pummeling my windshield, and the truck just kept bumping across gate, you know, Griffin, and these rocks were just emanating out of the space, not above, but below his gated area.
The, the wear and tear from one loaded truck is worth thousands of cars, I get that.
Yeah.
And you've made a good suggestion.
Yeah, they, they're really running, so thank you for your time, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll get to that budget thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I should've introduced to all of you Matt Flores, who's substituting for our attorney, Andy Ferris at the moment, but I haven't heard whether Andy's on the, whether the attorney's on the phone or not.
We can call him if you'll give me a moment.
Antonio.
He called in, I have a number, we'll get him on the line.
This Tony, this is Bill Guy, in the meeting of the Gateway Services CDD. Are you joining us?
Yes, I am, Mr. Guy, and I apologize, I'm still at a planning commission hearing in Tiger County that is dragging on interminably.
So, what are, are you gonna, are you gonna ring off and we're gonna come back to you, or are you gonna stay with us?
I'll stay with you until they drag me back into the chambers, if that's all right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt's here representing you ably.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
That's all I have, sir.
Well, that's wonderful, all right. I believe that the next thing on the agenda is an item, did I hear something?
Yes, sir.
Good to see you. Employee health insurance benefits contributions, and I believe that this has Mr. Senior's footprints on it, and so would you please review this with us, please?
Thank you. This is a suggestion, a proposal, and a motion for a contribution, and I would say a modest or nominal contribution to employee benefits made by the employees. The background to this briefly is that several municipalities are doing this. Lee County is charging employees who choose to be on the plan an amount of thirty dollars per month. We also have Seven Trent themselves, charge employees a hundred and three dollars a month for their premium plan, and for a standard plan, forty-three dollars a month. That's for standard health and dental and vision. So, that's forty-three dollars for, for an employee in Seven Trent. The proposal I'm making today is to make effective May the first, 2016, which is when the next go-around on the health program. It will be the onus of the employee at that time to choose whether to participate in the program, and the proposal I'm making here is a contribution of forty dollars a month, which among the twelve employees totals five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars in a year. Considering there are total benefits for 2016, assuming there's no changes next May, the total premiums we're paying as a district is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, a contribution of five thousand seven hundred and sixty from the twelve employees amounts to four point six percent of that, and the district will be therefore contributing the balance to ninety-five point four percent, and I regard that as modest. Forty dollars a month being five thousand seven hundred and sixty for twelve employees is almost exactly one percent of salary, because salaries without benefits is five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So, the proposal is to, to start a forty dollars a month employee contribution to benefits, starting May the first, 2016, of, which, which is around one percent of salary and four point six percent of the premium paid.
And you're making that a motion, sir?
That would be my motion.
Is there a second to this motion?
Yes.
We have a second. Is there a discussion to this motion?
Yes.
Margaret?
I just, to, to clarify it for me, I wanted to make sure the city of Fort Myers does still continue to pay a hundred percent of, of the contribution for the employee. If you had a spouse or family, then you'd pay a portion of it. So, what we're doing is not unprecedented in the county, the city of Fort Myers does it. And in speaking with the HR individual that I talked to today, she also said you have to be very careful that employee contributions do not end up being more than nine point five percent of the adjusted gross income of any employee, because otherwise you're subject to penalties from the Internal Revenue Service. So, I don't know how we would be able to determine that readily.
Well, we are, this proposal is one percent.
So, I'm just gonna say that I'm not in favor of doing that. I don't, I don't think we're talking about enough of a, of a savings to make it worthwhile. I think our employees are, are worth this.
Pam?
I'm pretty much in agreement with Margaret.
Thank you.
Here. There's really three different things for Lee County that were brought out here, and I, maybe I missed it, but there's medical, dental, and vision. What are we covering broad?
Medical, dental, and vision.
Okay.
Same thing.
So, this amount of money that the district is contributing, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year, so we're talking about, the percentages have been kind of flipped around here for me. Margaret talked about nine percent, or nine point something percent, but yet we're nowhere near nine percent, but that seemed to be the rationale that Margaret used, unless I missed her math someplace in her discussion. But of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the contribution of approximately five thousand dollars isn't one percent, and one percent got thrown into this group of figures as well.
One percent of salaries, Margaret's point was nine percent of income, if I heard you correctly.
Adjusted gross income.
Yeah, gross, we're at one percent of gross income.
That's, well, it would be any individual employee's adjusted gross income, which we would have no way of knowing what that is.
Okay.
Why not?
Because that's when you do your own individual tax return, you get your adjusted gross income.
So, in other words, you're saying that, this is kind of new math to me. An employee has the right to do whatever they want to do, but we are held to a standard of nine point something percent based upon, I'm sorry, I didn't finish, based upon what they do with their taxes?
Based upon the Internal Revenue Service's rules. That's what the HR told me from the city of Fort Myers, that you have to be careful.
That is, you're still not answering my question. The nine point whatever percent is based upon what and who calculates an adjusted gross income?
When you do your tax return, everybody comes up with an adjusted gross income. That's part of what you can get, your adjusted gross income and a modified adjusted gross income, it's on every person's ten forty they send me.
What's the adjusted gross income based upon? What are the factors?
The, what deductions you take.
Deductions and exemptions, exemptions for spouse and children.
And schooling and whatever you can possibly put in there.
So, similarly, I sat down with the Human Resources Director at Lee County, Margaret, and it was, it was that person who gave me this list, and I'm sure they've introduced this, thirty dollars a month for their employees with, with all that knowledge that you're talking about, that the city.
May I proceed?
Sure.
Do you have other things?
No.
Okay, I wanna start by saying, first of all, that I respect and value the work our staff does. Thousands of residents are dependent upon them. Our staff is not a bunch of high-income doctors or lawyers or even union teachers or requirements. Most make in the thirty thousand dollar range gross. Our current plan calls for the board to pay the cost of a single contract for medical insurance, which is eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars per month. Nine employees participate, all with single coverage, even though six are married. The cost of a family's coverage is very high, and the board is not paying any of it, and that is one of the reasons prospective employees are turning us down. To require our staff to pay an additional five hundred dollars out of their pocket per year for what I consider very little benefit, and probably a lot of negative morale for our staff, is, I think, just outrageous, and I will not support it.
Bill, how did he come up with five hundred dollars?
Forty dollars a month, times twelve months, is four hundred and eighty dollars.
I, you're rounding up to five hundred, okay.
He is correct. Are we ready to vote on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? No?
No. Oh, for God's...
Motion's failed, four to one, or one to four. Thank you very much. Committee reports is next. Roadway Landscape Advisory Committee, is that you, Paul?
If you wanted to be... Good afternoon. For the record, Paul Wingard, representing your Roadway Landscape Advisory Committee. I did provide the board with a written little update that everybody should've got, but I'll just go through that real briefly. At our July meeting, which we didn't actually have until August 11th, we did select a fifth committee member, so that fills up to five slots. We also looked at the RFQ process that's going out for the Roadway Landscape Master Plan, and basically blessed that, and staff is moving forward with that. The plan is that the proposals will be due back around, roughly mid-September. They will come back to the committee, and then at the September 22nd meeting, we'll shortlist them and start the interview process and bring a recommendation back to the board. We also talked about moving forward with the design project for the north end of Gateway Boulevard, the four medians, starting from eighty-two coming back to the south. And, working with staff, they put out a request for letters of intent to do design that are actually due back on August 31st. Once we get them back from some landscape architects, Scott will provide his comments and forward them onto the committee, and we'll provide our comments so that we can select a landscape architect to begin on that design. And the way the LOI is written, it actually requires the design to be done by October 2nd, as far as preparing a design and also preparing some bid documents to go out to bid on the project. That's kind of an update of where we're at on our old business, on new business. We also talked about the possibilities of trying to change the committee to get around some of the sunshine laws, and maybe that's not a good use of the word, but to structure the committee in a different manner, but the committee's decision was that things were fine as they were, and actually, we're going to get the district attorney to provide an update to the board at our August meeting next week, just to kind of go through what that actually means again.
Tony, are you awake?
Yes, sir, absolutely, and yes, I will be present in person at the meeting on the 24th, I believe it is, to discuss and refresh everybody and the committee members' asked to their implications of the sunshine law to the committee.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And that's it?
Thank you very much. Paul, question?
I have one.
Yep.
Anything that we can do with the medians now to kind of, you know, make them look a little better than they do now? They just look torn up. I mean, even like, you know, I don't know, anything would be better than what, the way it looks now.
Scott Connell, for the record. We have experienced numerous outages on our streetlights. The conduit ran right down the median, so we've had to have the electrician come out five times at least, and dig potholes to find where the break is. Sometimes it breaks, it takes a little while, water gets in there, and it causes the, the short, so they've had to repair that. So, we still continue to have some issues with the lights, and hopefully by the end of today, we'll, they'll stay current and everything else, and then we'll, we'll look at how we can restore the area. Old Donald Landscaping still has sod restoration to do up in front of the monument sign, so we'll have a look at that and see if we can tidy it up, but I wanted to finish digging holes before I clean up and dig them again, so, thank you.
I understand, thank you.
Pam?
Okay, so Paul, when, once the design comes back in October, if that's gonna be complete, you said the design is, you're hoping that...
For the, for the four medians at the north end of Gateway Boulevard, correct.
So, at that point, when the work starts, is the work gonna start at that point? Because we're just getting the design.
That's a good question, and it's gonna depend on how the board wants to move forward. Right now, you own the road. You can go out there and put it in, if the design's done October 2nd, you can put it in October 3rd, or as fast as you can hire a contractor. But that road will become Lee County's property at some point in time. You may want to consider running whatever plans you come up with through Lee County for their approval. In fact, if you go back to the inter-local agreement, it actually says that any landscape changes will be given to Lee County for their review and approval, once the road is done. So, this is, you're kind of in between right now, so that's gonna be just a decision the board is ultimately gonna have to make, how you wanna, you know, if you wanna take it on your shoulders to accept it and move forward, you can do that. It probably takes a couple weeks for staff to get a bid once the plans are done, but it could certainly happen fairly quickly after that. Again, if you decide to go back to the county, how long would their review process take? If DOT reviews it themselves, maybe a week or two? If they run it through their Landscape Advisory Committee, probably a couple of months.
Okay.
Pam, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
That's just a guess on my part, so.
Gary, please.
On the minutes of July 23rd, specifically lines 79, 80, and 81, it says, quote, "The board members want something," this is referring to the plantings at that end, "permanent, dramatic, and colorful." Is that what you understood is what we want? I thought we want something that's going to be permanent, quality, and an indication of the quality of the community from the beginning of the entry into the community, not something that's garish and whatever. Plus, also, if we try to do something now as a temporary fix, I'm concerned it's going to be garish and, forgive me, god-awful. On another note, the gentleman that was concerned about the trucks, this is a roadway expert at the podium. Are you concerned about the dump trucks doing damage to the paving on Griffin Drive, et cetera? And if you are, then that's going to really spur, I think, us on to do something different.
Okay, well, if you want me to come back and answer the landscape question, I will try to do that.
Would you please, in that order?
But, but I'll, you want the landscape first? You don't care, okay.
Paul, whatever you need.
On Griffin Drive, the gentleman asked the question, and I think his concern was that somebody is gonna go out there and pave Griffin Drive, and then dump trucks are gonna run across it. If that road is not repaired, as those trucks continue... going to run across it. If that road is not repaired, as those trucks continue to run across that road, you're not only going to destroy the asphalt, you're going to destroy the base, and the prices that you have to repair that road right now will go out the window, because they're going up a whole bunch. If you pave the road and you allow dump trucks to run across it, does that create wear on the road? Yes, but again, with the new roadway, that wear and tear is going to be a lot less, because part of what we're going to do with the repair on your section of roadway is not only just the asphalt, but also where some of the base is failing. He suggested that you possibly look at having the trucks go out to eighty-two as opposed to run through Gateway Boulevard. Great idea, if I live in Gateway Boulevard, totally agree with him. But remember that that's a WCI development. They own that part of Griffin Drive. I really don't think you're going to have a lot of say in which direction they go. You may be able to do some arm twisting and try, but remember where they're ultimately going to is the Arborwood Development, which is just the other side of Gateway Drive. If you push them out on eighty-two, they've got to take eighty-two to Daniels, back up Tree Line, it's a lot longer ride. And then they're going to be driving through another community to get to where their ultimate dump site is, so pick your poison. But am I concerned, yeah, it's nice to have no dump trucks ever run across the road. They're one of the worst vehicles, as Rod suggested. One dump truck does the wear and tear of about nine thousand nine hundred cars, just to give you some actual numbers.
Well, at least we've got your expertise in the minutes.
But if the road is, I guess the, one other part of his question, he asked, "Do you have a contingency to repair the road if it is damaged by those dump trucks?" You won't own the road, Lee County will. It becomes Lee County's problem to repair it if five years from now it's wore out. So it won't cost us as Gateway residents money, it will cost us as Lee County taxpayers money, but it's spread over a much larger base. That's the whole reason you want to turn the road over to Lee County. Back to your landscape question, my memory's good, but I don't remember what the line items say. But as far as being the word dramatic, I think what, I think what was being said was to look at something that was, or that is colorful and adds to the, to the look and feel of Gateway Boulevard. I'm not sure if that would be garish or not. I guess that's an opinion question, but that's why, because of some of our own indecision, why we're looking at getting a landscape architect. That is supposedly their specialty, so I would defer to them to be dramatic but not garish.
Very good choice of words, Paul.
You did good, Paul.
Please.
Three points, Paul. I was at your last landscape meeting. First point, I think you're doing a great job as a committee, and I think the process you're adopting is first-class, I want to say that. Second thing, I'm glad you filled the vacancy with a really deep, experienced landscaper, Kevin Coleman. I'm sure he's going to be a good addition. And thirdly, I'm not in favor of doing a temporary fix and wasting money. I'd rather see nothing done and wait than put plants in and then take them out. I think we're wasting residents' money.
And that is the direction we're going at this point in time.
Thank you. I know, I was just referring to Margaret's comment.
Okay, the only question may be, it may be a timing issue, no matter how hard we push, it just depends what happens with the county.
I agree, Margaret. It doesn't look great, but I'd rather, I'd rather just wait, mine personally, than waste money.
Well, I think the other thing that Margaret was suggesting was temporary fix the sod kind of thing, not do planting right now, just to clean the area up, and that's what Scott said will, will happen, so.
Make it not look like a construction area, but I understand why it does with the lines. And just a question, oh, sorry.
No, you've got the floor.
Arborwood, the dump trucks with them coming down Griffin Drive and going to Arborwood, aren't they already driving over what we paved?
No.
No?
No, not, no, not where they're coming out. They come out onto Griffin Drive, take Griffin Drive to Gateway Boulevard, go south to Commerce Lakes and out Commerce Lakes Drive.
Okay, they're going that way.
So they're not driving over that part of the pavement. But sooner or later, they will be driving over pavement that either you all put down or WCI puts down.
If I may, Scott Connell, they are coming to the end of hauling the fill. They're hauling the excess fill from Hampton Park over to Arborwood. And then they're going to be, as Paul mentioned, they are going to be restoring that part of Griffin Drive, and I don't think that they would restore or tear up what they are restoring. So I think the excess fills transport will come to an end very soon. I don't know that date, and then that'll stop, and then they'll re-pave the road, and then we'll have normal traffic.
Scott, could you ask the sheriff to give us some attention to that area, specifically where the rocks are coming off the back of the truck?
Charlie.
Thank you.
Excuse me, while you're there, Paul and Scott, one thing. I know we're probably a bit ahead of the game, but once you get to October and these, these artist renderings or from the L.A. come in, would it be an idea to put them on the website for residents to comment on? Or would you rather not put that, would you rather keep it out of the residents' view?
I'll defer to the committee, but I think we need to hash it through.
I mean, obviously, but when we get down to the wire and we've got some options, what about letting the residents see it? Do you think, or do you, do you think that might be counterproductive?
That's possible, but I'm not sure the letter actually asks for an artist's rendering and asks for an L.A. drawing.
Okay.
A lot of people have a hard time understanding what those drawings tell them.
If there's no pictures, then I agree with you. Yeah, thank you.
Everybody okay? Thank you very much, Paul. Ladies and gentlemen, next item on the I C D on my agenda is under Committee Reports four B, Contract Spreadsheet. That includes a information memo from Scott. Do you want to help us through this, or are you going to leave us on our own?
It was just informational update, going through the contract summary and updating that. We know some things coming up the end of next month and all, and I just tried to give a little extra information, explanation on where we are, what we're doing, if you have any questions.
Gary? What is STD, LTD, and ST?
Short-term disability, long-term disability for the...
And ST?
Pardon me?
And ST?
Through Severn Trent, pardon me.
These contractions are great if you know what they're, what they mean. If you have the, if you have the first out in full and the first part of the memo... Correct, correct.
So noted.
But for anybody researching these things at a later date, kind of tough. Thank you. Margaret?
And this is probably for Danny. I just wondered on page thirteen, which was the lakes, the extreme divers, what lakes are next? These look like we're hopefully coming to the end of these contracts. What lakes are next, and when do we start?
I don't recall off the top of my head which lakes. My memory's a lot like Paul's. It's good, but not that good. I do know that eighty-seven will be in that mix, and we had identified, I think, the four or five for the next. The design on those can start anytime. I think the, you know, our plan of action, what we're recommending was, let's see how these current lakes, you know, Handel actually went out and looked at the lakes today. Of course, it's hard to, you know, see a lot because of the water levels, but they look really good, and we're in the, you know, the height of the rainy season, so, so I, you know, we could start design now. I'm a little hesitant to do much at this point until we, you know, we can get into the dry season and have a little bit better data. The one thing that I think we've mentioned to the board is, we'd like to see done differently is, you know, how the current lakes have been done, is we've basically taken an aerial image and said, here's the area, here's a typical cross-section, contractors give us a bid and move forth and do the work. We'd really like to do this right and actually have each lake surveyed, so we know the proper cross-sections and everything else. So that's an effort that can be done. Well, it can be done now, and now would give us good information in terms of what that high water level is, so I would say, you know, yes, that could be done now. So I don't think that fully answers your question, but I think it's a little premature.
That's helpful. I mean, as far as actually doing lake bank repair, I assume we weren't going to be able to do that until the water levels went down, but I was hoping, you know, like what you're saying with the surveying, we can go ahead and start working on that so that when dry season does come, we're actually ready to do some more.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be our goal, would be to have, you know, bid packages ready, that we would not be doing the work in June and July of next year, but we can have the survey data done, we can have the basis of the drawings ready, and just that final design would be the last part we, you know, pull the trigger on.
Okay.
So, you know, that's essentially where we are. So we can do that at, at any time, the survey.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Danny, may I assume that all of the contracts for all of the lake banks that we have awarded, have awarded, have been completed satisfactorily?
No, lakes, no. And that's simply because we, one oh four, I was out there today. They, they're not going to start on one oh four until they finish one oh six, seven, and eight, and I believe they're going to be done with that either this week or early next week. There's just a little bit left to do. Then what they've got to do, Extreme Divers is the only vendor that we're working with right now. They'll then pump down Lake one oh four. Essentially, what they'll do is they'll pump that back into the system, and they'll, they'll backplug it to hold that water level down, and then they'll complete that work, so.
You're talking about one oh four now?
One oh four. So, once that is done, we're, we're complete. Eighty-seven was the only other lake that was awarded, and the board previously pulled that as we canceled that contract with, with that vendor.
Has that lake been completed?
No, the one oh, eighty-seven, no, no, nothing had even started on eighty-seven, that's why, and that was with the vendor that was doing Lake one oh four, Land Shore, and that was, our recommendation was to stop that altogether and just go ahead and include it in the next, in the next phase of work to be done, in the next, in the next bid package. So that work is, nobody is under contract to do that work. It hasn't started, it's, it's just into the next, it'll go into the next cycle.
I must have misunderstood you. Tell me about eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, there's no work being done on it. That work was designed, it was awarded to Land Shore. Land Shore never did any work on it. We had the issues with one oh four, which they were also awarded. That contract was canceled, and eighty-seven essentially defaulted because the time ran out. So they are, nobody's contracted right now to work on eighty-seven. Eighty-seven has not been touched, and this board, I think, previously said, let's include it in the next package.
Could you give me a little memo when you don't have anything better to do, and just to help refresh my...
Sure.
...understanding of which ones are finished and which ones aren't, what da-da-da-da?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Couldn't we have that included in the package?
It's a great idea.
I thought so, so that the public can know it too. I've got a couple of questions on page fifteen.
Just one sec. Are you finished with this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Newberry, question on page fifteen, is that for Danny?
I think Danny and Yvonne, probably either, either, even either. The Siemens odor control units, which are coming up, our three-year lease is ending the end of December, the end of the year. At that time, is it, do we just keep the same units and just keep, or do they switch out the units and put in something newer, better, more energy efficient, more...
The units that we have right now, they have been tweaked at the present time they are working. Especially the one that we had the most problem was on Stony Brook.
Correct.
And eventually, what they did, they ended up putting another polishing unit, is made of carbon, activated carbon, and apparently resolved the problem. The one in the church, sometimes you got a wave, maybe they had to do the same. So the same units are working fine, they are in good condition. If there is a little problem, what they do, they add the polishing unit in addition to what is existing there, and that should take care of the problem. So at the, when the time comes...
So these things have got kind of an endless life, so to speak?
They, they last about ten years.
Ten years.
Yeah.
Well, it's a contract that expires on December thirty-first of this year with equivalent Siemens. Is it going to be rebid, is it going to be renewed, is it going to be what?
It was up to me, I would renew the contract.
Well, are you going to, is that, that's a recommendation?
That, at the time, when the time comes, I have to ask them for what it is and extend the contract.
Well, all right, then in following with that, who, who would be competitors that we could look at the public and go, hey, look, we went out, we knew this was coming, it's six months, no, it's four months away, almost four months away exactly. Why don't we have their bid, two other bids, so that we can make a decision?
I'm going to give you an advice.
No?
If you have something that is working fine, and the price that they are charging us is a very reasonable price, and that's based on my experience, I've been working with other control units since nineteen ninety-three, and I believe that the units are working very good. I would keep what I have that is working good, and in my opinion, is a reasonable cost. I would keep the same until there is something better than what they have on there.
But you constantly are looking and inquiring as to whether there is something better, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, there isn't any new innovative state-of-the-art...
There are many ways to skin the cat. For example, I have used in the past a chemical injection like peroxide or nitrates to reduce the odor, and then you use biofiltration, carbon. What they are using is a combination of carbon and nitrates and other chemicals to kill the odor when it comes from the, from the, from the units. So at this time, we are not using any pre-treatment before it gets to the unit, and we are not experiencing any corrosion in the system, except for one manhole that was identified in the Tratek report, which has been fixed. So we don't have a serious problem in the system, it's just odor that can be managed at the pump station, and I suggest that we continue doing it that way.
Is any board member totally opposed to accepting our professional's recommendation that we try and negotiate another three years for this company?
You want to make a motion of that, Bill?
I will, if you...
I'll second it.
I didn't, it's been seconded.
Discussion?
Have we had a, have we had discussion?
I thought we beat it to death, haven't you? Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You got ahead of me there.
All right, then, a couple, another question, and this is more my memory situation. What are, you've talked about the corrosion, you talked about the manhole. What are we doing with the viewings of the sewer system, which hasn't really been done for so many years?
In twenty-seven years.
Yes, sir.
In fact, I met with a company today. We, there, there is, this company's sewer viewers, and the second one is Sharon Dowa. They do this type of work, so I'm going to procure proposals from both of them and bring it to you for approval. What I intend, I was only to them, I intend to go through the entire cycle, at least every seven years, to televise all the lines and clean it up and so on, and if there is something broken, fix it. I believe that he indicated to me that in the past, he submitted to us a proposal, but I don't know why the decision was not made, but he said that it's about a dollar twenty-five for televising, cleaning the lines, so it's not expensive. So what we have to do is to have a budget every year to do so many linear, an amount of linear feed of pipe, in such way that every seven year, we'll go to the entire system and clean it up and keep it up.
Okay, I have just one other thing, and that's the vending machines. Goes back to my youth. It shows that there's a monthly ten percent commission from the pool machines. Total income, zero. Now, I can't imagine that. So somebody with my mind is going to look at that going, where's the money going to? Ah, Cal C, Cal's eyebrows of parole.
I didn't hear the question.
Page fifteen of the agenda.
The income from vending machines?
Vending machines, surpass vending solutions, monthly ten percent commission from the pool machines. The expiration date is January twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, and the income, zero. Just thought somebody might look at that also like I did, and, hmm, that's new math, too.
We did change vendors, and I will find out for you. I know that we, when we get our, our share on a quarterly basis, that he reimburses us the vending...
Here's, here's my input.
And I'll get with Stephen.
I thought that went to the holiday event. I thought that was kind of the understanding. But I just wanted to clarify it, and I think that the public would like that clarified as well.
Would you clarify that portion?
I'll clarify that.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Okay, I think we're through with contract spreadsheets, and next is the consent agenda. Three items, A, B, and C. Is there anyone, anybody that wants to talk about any of the three items on the consent agenda? Ron?
Five B.
B?
B? Anybody else?
Financials.
Say again?
Financials, I just want to, okay, I'm there.
Please take the floor, Ron, on financials. Give us a page number, please.
Stephen, could I ask, could I ask to speak to you, please, on this? With, page thirty-one. Stephen, you and I briefly talked about this this week, but I want to get this on record, so we all are looking at the same issue. On page thirty-one, we're looking at the, what I'm interested in is, on the enterprise fund is the amount of net liquid assets we have, and we're, when you look at the liquidity here on, on the current assets, then one point, one, one and a half million dollars is the top-line cash checking account, and all those items underneath it, all the way down to ICS investments for two point six million are all liquid cash, correct? So that's, that's roughly four point two million dollars, those figures added together, just rough ballpark.
Stephen Blum, Severn Trent, the only item that wouldn't be the liquid cash, I mean, it will, future cash is the accounts receivable.
Yes, okay. So we're around just over four million dollars, and then if we wind down to page thirty-two to the liability side, and we, and we take out the obvious ones, which is the three hundred and seventy-four thousand accounts payable, and the six hundred and fifty thousand residents' deposits, that's about a million bucks. So if we take that off the four million, then we've got about net three million or just over in liquidity.
That's correct.
For the enterprise fund, does that sound right?
Yes, I mean, again, those are estimates.
I'm sorry?
Those are estimates, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a ballpark for where we stand cashing back. So, bottom of page thirty-two, looking at the retained earnings reserved for the enterprise fund, we have one point one million dollars.
That's correct.
Even though we have roughly three, three million bucks in cash net, we've only reserved one of those to reserves.
That's correct.
So with all the projects coming up, and Ivan's working and Scott on reviewing our utilities assets and looking at going forward what we're going to have for our capital investment program, it's going to be important to start shifting some of that money into reserves, is that the plan?
Well, the, the plan would be to present it to the board, you know, at the end of the year, and request, you know, an emotion to approve how much would like to be moved into the reserve. And again, a lot of this cash that we're just talking about is a direct result of the credits, you know, from the county, you know, that have been going on, so that's why you've seen your cash. Prior to those credits, the cash, you know, was not nearly in as good a position, as well as, you know, you have increased the rates, utility rates over the last couple of years, so that's why you're starting to see your, your balances come more in line with what you would expect.
So we've got an extra, just over an extra million bucks because of the Lee County credit, so the fact that we have three million in the bank, net-net cash, and one, only one of those is allocated to reserves, we could, we could effectively shore up our reserves significantly now?
That's correct.
When will that, when would that, when would be the right time to do that?
It's going to be October, because we'll finish the September financials, and then we'll present it. It'll be for all of the funds, I mean, we're just talking about the enterprise, but that exercise has to be done for the general fund, Pelican Preserve Fund. Each one of those, you have to review, you know, where you are, and how much do you want to move into reserves? And in particular, for the Pelican Preserve Fund, you know, you take a look at projects and see exactly what you were able to accomplish, because that particular fund had a lot more of a budget than was accomplished this year, so there'll be some solid reserves, so yes.
Thanks, thank you.
Gary? Can we set a date in October for this? This is obviously a very important thing, so that everybody's aware of what meeting that's going to be.
Are you, are you comfortable doing, setting an October date, one and then September thirtieth?
Oh, as long as it's the second meeting.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you rather do it first of November?
It's, you know, we could squeeze it in, I think, what, normally what happens is, is the second week of each month, you get the financials.
I know, but the people at Pelican Reserve and other things are going to have to have some conversation.
Absolutely, that's probably where you're going to find it. I think we can set a date that we will release the information, so that, you know, it's out and then start the discussions, might be a better way of doing it.
Oh, you're not ready to give us your recommendations at that time?
I would prefer, because it really is to give everybody some time, because what, a big part of this is going to be what projects were you not able to accomplish this year, and what projects do you want to accomplish maybe next year and the next two? So Pelican Preserve's going to need some time, you're going to have to have some time to make sure you know what you want to do with the lakes, you know, for, for the general fund, and then for the enterprise fund, you know, the same type of thing, any infrastructure projects. So, you know, in terms of when you do it, I, you know, I feel comfortable releasing financials certainly by the second week in, in October, but I, I think you're probably going to want everybody to have a little bit more time.
All right, so then the second week, and the second meeting is in November.
Sounds pretty good.
That sounds good.
So is that a plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Manager, will you put that on the agenda? Stephen, now are we going to have separate capital funds for these, general and Pelican Preserve and Enterprise, that for start next year, separate, separate funds instead of just accounts that we keep running around and?
We have, yes, the budget we have split out into separate funds. Now, I, I'm going to, you know, the exception is your audit will not. The auditors will fold those, will, you know, bring those together, but we internally with the district can have separate funds, that's not a problem.
Thank you. May we excuse Stephen for the, for a moment? Thank you, Steve, but I'd like Yvonne to come back up for just one second while we were talking about all of this enterprise fund. Would you give us no more than a two-minute review of where we are on the meter project?
Okay. At the present time, the contractor is working in Devonshire Lakes, it will be the last subdivision, single family or duplex subdivision. The next step, they received the large meter this week, so they're going to start installing the, the large meters. This is when we are going to start with the change order that nobody likes. Devonshire Lakes is going to require auto-change orders, so I'm going to come back to you guys, I need that much money from the budget to do the change order. The reason for a change order in Devonshire Lakes is that there are small meters, and some of them, they are very sunk, so the units don't fit inside the meter box, so in some of them, or most of them, we have to install another meter box and require additional work. In the commercial areas, they are, in addition to the, to the, to the replacement of the meter, there may be additional fittings and nipples and stuff like that that we have to replace, that that's not part of the contract, it will be an extra work, so we have to take one by one, but that will be the end of the, the project. So we are about, maybe about ninety percent of the, of the meter installed. They are, they are reporting very well, it's been a good tool, especially with some customers, sometimes they don't realize that they have a leak, or they are using more water than what they should, sometimes they don't believe it, we show them, they say, look, this day is what you're using, or we can tell them by the hours. And, or when there is a leak, sometimes we call them, hey, apparently you have a leak in your house, and. So it's a, so far, so good. We, we haven't had, we have had some glitches, and the contractor had come, and we had to add additional transmitters and so on, because apparently the vegetation is interfering with the transmission, so we had to add additional units to communicate, but it's working fine.
You remember, there's any change order over five thousand dollars, you and I have got to work.
That's correct, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other question? Ron?
If you remember, Ivan, we, we had to put a supplement to the agreement for the old meters that were coming out of the ground, we were going to get four dollars fifty scrap value for them.
It was, but now it's less, now they, remember I told you that the price varies? The contractor, the buyers came back to forty-nine and say, I cannot continue buying you the meters for four dollars and make sense.
So what's, what's the deal? What are we getting?
Three dollars and I forgot what I had on my head.
Okay, so we're getting about twenty grand back on six thousand meters.
Oh, yes, yeah, we have got together.
Where do we stand on that? How much have we got?
Yeah, every, in every paycheck, we are getting some money. I believe that we have been able to sell our, so far, over seven thousand dollars or more, three different checks.
Okay, so the checks are coming in monthly for the old meters?
Yeah, almost every page.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items five A through five C.
Thank you. Question, Pam, second, anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Board's going to stand in recess for ten minutes.